Good evening. I'd like to welcome all who are listening, viewing here in the room with us. I know we at least have one visitor this evening. Meeting is being recorded, video and audio both. We've got a public comment section this evening. And when we get to that section on the agenda, community members who wish to speak to the board will have to provide their name, address, and they have five minutes to speak. Members of the public that are using Zoom application wish to address the board, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the application or window to signal that you wish to address the board. Members of the public connected by phone only need to press star nine to indicate they wish to address the board in the public comment section. Those that are attending in person should sign up on the signup sheet near the entry. Comments are limited to five minutes. They should be directed to the board. We encourage and in fact require that any customer who is speaking not disclose any confidential information, which is which includes account information on an account that's not in their name or their own account. I would encourage you not to do that. And staff will not provide individual account information or history during an open meeting to protect confidentiality. As always, public may also email or call the BPU with any concerns. The agenda and presentations may be found on the BPU website. Or if you're using Zoom, they'll appear on your screen. My name is Rose Mulvaney Henry, member at large, position three and board president. Other members of our board and staff include Bill Johnson, our general manager, David Haley, member at large, position two, who I believe is joining us remotely this evening. Tom Groneman, second district and board vice president, also joining us remotely this evening. Bob Mylan, first district and board secretary. Jeff Bryant, third district. Mary Gonzalez, member at large, position one. This evening, in place of Angela Lawson, we have the incomparable Wendy Green, senior counsel for the Unified Government and BPU. This is a reminder, put your phones on silent if you have not already. And please be aware that the microphones are very sensitive and they can pick up and record comments made anywhere in the room. Before we begin, if we would please rise and join me reciting our pledge of allegiance. Wendy, if I may ask you, please to take roll call for attendance.
Yes, roll call. Gonzalez here. Groneman. Haley. Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
And I'll go back. Groneman. I will note that we can see that he is present.
Here, here.
Thank you. You have a call.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Before I ask for a motion to approve the regular session agenda of tonight's agenda, February 1st, 2023, are there any comments on the agenda? Any additions or corrections? Hearing none?
Move to approve.
Second.
Can I get a roll call, please, Wendy?
Roll call. Gonzalez.
Here. Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley. Haley.
Aye.
Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Before I ask for a motion to approve the regular session of the January 18, 2023 meeting, are there any comments, additions or corrections? Having heard none?
Move to approve.
Mr. Jeff, I second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Mr. Johnson, I will turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Thank you, Madam President. Next thing on the agenda are public comments. So I do have two people signed up here visiting whatever it is today. First, I'll ask C.C. Mank to come up to the podium. If you could please restate your name and address for the records. And again, you have five minutes.
Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
So my name is Tassia Mank, and I live here in Wyandotte County. You are familiar with me. I had posted last week that BPU had shut off a mother's lights when it was 16 degrees outside. This has been an ongoing thing that I've talked to you about since 2019. When I posted that, I found out that you turned off a disabled lady's water on that very same day. Yet our bills continue to go up and the lobby is still closed. You're saving a million dollars a day. I left off at 913 million when I left here last time. I haven't added that up since that time, but I'm sure we're close to almost a billion dollars that you're saving. But our bills are going up. I last night, within 24 hours ago, posted another post that said, if you want me to cuss on your behalf at BPU, please let me know. The number was outstanding. And yes, some of them asked me to use their first and last name, but I'm familiar with some of the things that happen when you speak out. Because the young lady that I brought here last time to complain about her bill being high in a two-bedroom apartment, that bill went up by a hundred dollars even though she went through extra measures to make sure that the bill went down. It doesn't matter what you do in Wyandotte County, the bill goes up. Also, I was contacted and have several messages, and I was surprised at the number of people who were willing to send me their bill via screenshot. Because people are usually private about those kind of things. They didn't care about names, numbers, or any of that. They cared about it doubled in December and January. The cheapest bill I seen was the young lady who came here. Everybody else's was 800 to more. 800, and the highest I seen was 1193. And the only thing I can contribute it to is the raises that we see amongst the top 20 here at BPU and the Unified Government or what. When we come here and complain, you then say, well, is that the UG side of the bill or the BPU side of the bill? It's the bill. Period. It's the bill. I remember when I met Ms. Mulvaney, and this is no disrespect. I met Mrs. Mulvaney here in this lobby in 2019. She was running as a candidate. And she heard some of the stories and she said, I have to be honest with you. She put her hand over her heart. Said, I've never been concerned about my bill. She lives out in Piper, to my knowledge. Has your bill ever ran on a regular basis $800 a month in a two-bedroom house or apartment? That is more than their rent. More than their rent. And it is absolutely ridiculous because we vote you guys in. Now, the last one I actually want to read a little bit of this to you guys. I was reached out and she said, please help me to disclose this and find out what I'm supposed to do. She said, Mr. Groneman used his title as board member and secretary to get his grandson, C. Ramos, employment within a week's time as operations manager at one of your plants within a week's time. Then, three employees, and I'll just use the first initials. Their names are Jay Waldak, T. Howell, and M. Ferguson.
One minute remaining.
Were allegedly caught on camera taking equipment and copper from wherever. And because of their association to Mr. Johnson and another man by the name of J. Ash, no reprimands, and they still are employed. Is this why our bills are doubling, or is it because the big corporations get a break? I really would like to know because I think that somebody on a fixed income should not have to pay 800. That's more than most people's on a fixed income get. They only get seven, $800. Where are they going to get food and everything else from if your BPU bill is $800 for 130-day period? 130-day period. And this was hundreds of people, by the way. I want y'all to know. But none of them were from Piper.
Your time is up.
Ms. Mank, I would be happy to meet with you after the board meeting, collect your information and look into some of the things that you're alleging, okay? And if there are customers that want to contact me or Ms. Henson in the back, we can look into their bills and try to help determine what's going on, but I'll need that information and have them reach out to us directly. Next customer signed up is Manaya Taylor. Hopefully I pronounced your name correctly. If you can repeat your name and address on the record, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Manaya Taylor. I am a resident of Wyandotte County. I like to start by saying that I find it ignorant of whoever decided that these people only get five minutes to speak because it's not only five minutes that it takes to pay these expensive bills that they have to pay every month. And then the extra bills on top of that is extremely ignorant. I'd also like to say that I am a new mother and the bills that I've been receiving from BPU are outrageous. I'm unemployed. I have no income whatsoever, and you all are charging me $1,100 for my lights. And if I don't pay that by the end of the month, you are to turn my lights off, leaving me and my newborn child in nothing but darkness and the cold. And it's been extremely cold these past few days, as it is in Kansas. I'd also like to say that on behalf of most of the people that I know who have moved out of Wyandotte County due to you all and these high expensive bills and the way that you just disrespect people and don't care for anything that they say to you all, within these five minutes that you give them, I just find everything about it ignorant. Thank you.
So I don't have your address. I do have your name. Ms. Janetta Henson is sitting in the back. Gabby is sitting next to her. If you can get with her, we can take a look at your account and see if there's anything we can determine from that. Rob, is there anybody signed up with their hands raised? Okay, thank you. Next on the, I guess I will continue on. Next on the agenda is junior manager staff report. So I did ask Janetta and Gabby to just give another customer service update. I think this is, this is important for us to continue to get information out to the public. So I think Gabby, are you are you presenting tonight? You can come up to the podium. And I won't go any further. I'll let you take it from here. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Gabriella. I'm the supervisor of customer service and I report to Janetta Henson. So what I'm going to go over today.
Off the presentation. There you go.
Okay. Yeah. So what I'm going to go over today are self-service options that we have available to customers. It'll be a pretty deep dive into the website, and then I'm just going to give a small overview on the phone system. So the self-service options we have on the phone system, if the customer calls in, they can get their account balance the day their bills due, the last payment amount, and the date it was paid. They can also get the locations for all the kiosk machines within the metro area and then instructions to start service or transfer service. If they're not able to get all the instructions over the phone to transfer the service, we do refer them to the website. So next we'll focus on the website, and during the rest of the presentation, I'll be going between slideshow and then going on to the actual website to show you where you find the information. So we'll be discussing the outage map, the new service transfer service, the one-time bill pay, the search bar, and contact us. So here on the BPU homepage, we try to put some quick links here on the, in the center that customers will need to know. So the first one I'm going to go over is the outage map. So the outage map, which right now we don't have any outages, so that's good. This is where a customer can go to check to see if their power is out. So if, for example, if there was an outage, you could zoom in and it'll list the street names and it'll say how many people are out. There's a legend here in the corner. Hold on, go back. Yeah. And if it's red, that means we have verified it is an actual outage. If it's orange, that means it's predicted. And then if it's been restored, it'll be gray. So the customers will be able to check on the status of their utilities. And if they do have an outage and they're not on the list, then we encourage them to call the outage line to report their outage. Then the next thing we'll be going over is how customers can look up to start or transfer service. So they'll click on this link here. And it'll list the items that the customers need to send in to sign for service to set up their account, which includes a driver's license, passport, or a state ID. A social security number or an ITI number is requested, and we will need a copy of the signed lease agreement or their settlement statement. And we give them the information where they can email that into or fax that information over. Okay, the customers can also make a one-time payment here on the website online. So what they'll do is they'll click on pay bill. And when they click on pay bill, they're going to be instructed to enter their account number or the last four digits of their social. If the customer isn't aware where their account number is, we do have an image of a bill here and it'll display the account number here so the customer is able to locate that in order to make their payment. So they would go ahead and enter their account number. And then they'll click on the continue button. And once they click there, it'll direct them to the website to make the payment. It auto-populates the customer's information, so it'll have their name, their phone number, and their email address. If they have an amount due, it is going to give the amount due, the date the bill is due. The customer can make the option or choose the option to make the payment now, or they can schedule it for a future date. And then it lists the payment options that we have, so customers can pay with a credit card, debit card, check, PayPal, or Venmo and Amazon Pay. And then once they make the payment, as long as we have an email address entered here, they'll get an email confirmation back that the payment was made with the, with the confirmation number. And if the customer, if they, you know, don't see what they're looking for here on the homepage, we always have a search menu that they can use. So say a customer is interested in signing up for the solar farm that we have available at the Nierman plant, so they can type in here solar farm, hit enter, and then it'll bring up the search results. That's the first link that comes up, so they can click on that and it will take them to that page in case they're not sure what they have to click on up here to find that information. And they'll be able to fill out the application and sign up. And then lastly, I know Ms. Mulvaney said that at the beginning that the customers aren't encouraged to contact us, and we do want them to contact us. So if they scroll to the bottom of the page, there is a link there for the customers to contact the Board of Public Utilities. And it does give them the option to contact various departments. So the customers would fill out the required fields. And then on select inquiry, they can have the option to contact customer service, electric and water for any issues due to outages or main breaks or streetlights, and then electrical and water engineering for construction or service upgrades.
Bobby, before, I'm sorry, I should have stopped you a minute ago, but on the, the new service, the, or the pay, the one-time payment, sorry. If you go to that screen and scroll down, well, it's the part where you go in, yeah, to make it, scroll down, please.
Okay. You want me to go into like I'm going to make?
Yeah, I think you had to go in because there was a, I saw a note that said that something about 3,500
Oh, yes.
annual maximum.
No, so it's not an annual. It's a monthly maximum.
Okay, alright. That's why I just saw 3,500 and thought it was an annual.
No.
And then I thought that's less than 300 a month, so.
3,500 per month, calendar month.
Okay, alright, thank you.
No problem. So on the contact us, like I said, it'll, you can select the department you want to go to, and then you'll enter your information here, and then you'll be contacted back via email at the email address that you provided.
That's automatically routed to a different department.
Yes, it's automatically routed to the department. Like I, the person for customer service that actually comes somebody routed through my department. So we, I'm sure each department has a dedicated group that works those emailed requests.
And Gabby, on that, Bill, do, are we collecting data on average response times on something like that? I mean, I know that you guys are doing a lot of work on that right now, but.
You know, I don't know that we're collecting data on response time off of this. We can make a note of it, but I'm trying to see who's in the room that may be able to answer that. Let me get back with you.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're going to go to the residential tab. So when I did the slideshow, each, the top of each slide is going to discuss what tab I'm going on in case you guys have to go back to look anything up. So on this tab, we're going to be discussing life support, streetlights, the rate application manual, understanding your bill, bill pay options, and utility assistance. So if you go to the residential tab, you can see we have life support listed here. So under life support, it'll give the devices that we are eligible for life support information on the account. It also gives the phone number for the customer to call to set up the life support. We just want to know, make the customers aware that this has this information on here that life support does not indicate or guarantee your power will be restored any faster. It's advised that you do have a contingency or backup plan in place such a, in case an outage occurs. And it also should be noted that life support accounts are not relieved from collection procedures. So, you know, we do set up payment arrangements with customers. Of course, any customer that isn't able to make payments on their bill, so, you know, the life support customers would not be excluded. They're eligible for arrangements also. Then we also have information on this tab regarding streetlights. So it tells you in here the role that the streetlights play. If you have to have a streetlight repaired, so there's already one on your block that needs to be replaced because the light went out, we ask you to call the 573-9522 number. If you're in a neighborhood and you think there needs to be more streetlights added, then you would contact the Unified Government because they'll decide where streetlights need to be within the city. And that number is the 913-573-5311. If you would like to have a streetlight put on your property, then we do ask that you just contact our Electrical Engineering Department and they'll get a designer out there to meet with you to get that set up. If you don't want to read through all this information, we also have a video available on this tab where you can watch a video and it goes over the same information I just described with the streetlight, and it's about a two-minute video, I believe.
Gabby, I just want to make a little comment about this. I, this was just brought to my attention. One comment that I got called about. And the explanation in there of the zones and where they're working was very helpful.
Oh, yes. I was going to say that's on here also. It talks about the zones, and then they even had a new feature that they'll do a callback now. So they'll let you know that they received your order. Then once it's scheduled, you'll get a second callback. It says to let you know it's been going to be completed.
A lot of people will call the UG 311, and then I don't know what happens. So then they're, you know.
I would hope.
They're stuck thinking they've turned it in and they haven't.
Yes. I was going to say, I would hope the UG directs them back to us. But that's something we can just make sure we communicate to them if that.
I get that from a lot of people that call for, for that issue, but this was helpful information.
Okay. And then from the same residential tab, we're going to go ahead and move over to billing. So we have, as you all know, we've had a new bill print come out over a year ago. So we do have information on here regarding the new bill print and how to read it. Again, there's also a video. If the customer doesn't want to scroll through the pages that we have on here, we have a video that they can watch to understand their bill. If they want to view the bill, you'll just click here on the bill and it will take you through each page. So the first page of the bill is what I'll call the summary. It's going to add together all the BPU charges, the Unified Government charges, and the taxes. We have graphs here to, you know, depict what's going to be your, most of your usage. And then there's boxes here to describe what each thing is. If you click on this arrow, it'll take you to the next page. The second page is the definitions page. It also tells you how you can pay your bill. And if you have to update your mailing address, your email address, or your phone number, you would do that here. The third page of the bill is specific to just the BPU charges. So if a customer wants to know, you know, how much you're paying for their electric or water, this would break that down in detail specific to just the charges to BPU. Again, it's going to have graphs and it's going to have boxes here that the customers can look at so they know what the charges are. And the last page is the page specific to the UG charges. So this is going to have all the charges related to the Unified Government with their phone numbers that they can call, definitions of their charges, and then any special messaging that they have. The next, we're going to go to the bill pay options. So if a customer wants to know how they can make a payment or where they can go to make a payment or what kind of billing they can be on that information here. It discusses making online payments, payment at a kiosk, or getting on Flex Pay. If a customer wants to know about kiosk locations, they can click on this box here. And it'll give them the locations that are in the Wyandotte County and surrounding areas. It'll list the name of the business, the address, and their hours, and then a phone number in case you need to contact anybody.
Hey, Gabby, on that one?
Yes.
Excuse me. So if, if I went to Price Chopper at 76th and State, do I have to physically like interact with the kiosk, or do I interact with the customer service people who do that for me?
They have a kiosk.
A kiosk. So all of these locations are kiosk?
Yes.
Specific?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Which is same kiosks out front of the building here?
Yes.
Okay.
And I know you asked me that the other day.
That's okay.
I know our kiosk footprint has grown, so I don't, I'm having to go back and see all the locations too if we deploy more. How about Walmart?
So we do take payments at Walmart, but that's through our vendor, through Paymentis. They can make payments at Walmart. They don't have kiosk machines at Walmart.
And any other grocery stores or?
So we do SunFresh, Hen House, and Price Chopper. Now, if they do go pay at Walmart, Walmart does have their own bill pay system.
Right.
But we don't have a contract with them, so their payments don't post real time. We don't have a way to look up their payments. So if a customer pays there, then we, you know, we tell them we can't verify the payment, so we do have to wait until post. So we do encourage them, if they go to Walmart, to make sure that they say they want to pay through Paymentis or to just utilize one of the other kiosks at the, you know, businesses that we have a contract for, where they have the kiosk at, that we'll be able to verify their payment right away.
So why are there kiosks outside of Wyandotte County?
In case the customer say something happens where they're at work and they don't work in Wyandotte County. You know, they could work in Johnson County, Missouri, then we still give them those locations where they'll be able to make a payment.
Thank you.
So Gabby, if, if I make a payment at the kiosk, when does it post immediately?
So we can verify those payments. So no, it doesn't post immediately. They post in the morning at eight and three o'clock, but if a customer tells us they made a payment at a kiosk, since I said we have a contract with them, we can look up the payments and then reconnect them right away.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
Whereas since we don't have that with Walmart, we don't have a way to verify the payment.
Okay.
Okay. And then last here, we're going to go over utility assistance. So if a customer's, you know, having an issue paying their bill, we do have a page dedicated to utility assistance. So on this page, we discuss the hardship program that BPU partners with United Way. We give the requirements for eligibility, and then the phone number they can call. They can call customer service or they can call the hardship line. So a customer service will just kind of review the account with them to make sure they're eligible and then refer them over. Also, if the customer wants to contact other agencies, we do have an emergency utility assistance program list here that they can click on. And they can contact these agencies for assistance to see if they would be able to help them with their bill. Okay, the next tab we're going to go over is the resources tab. And in here, I'm just going to touch on one. It's savings tips that we recommend customers view to help lower their utility bill. So on here, we have several videos. They're all about a minute long. Sorry, let me go to the tab. So it's saving energy with your appliances, smart heating, cooling, and water tips, and helpful homeowner tips. So on here, like I said, there's several videos. They're all about a minute long. If a customer wants to come in on here and, you know, get some ideas to do a couple of videos that, you know, might be helpful. There's one about washing clothes and using cold water versus using hot water. That'll help lower utility costs. And then also running ceiling fans during the winter months and the summer months to help circulate the air and to help lower your utility costs. And then the next tab we're going to go over is about BPU. And on this one, I'm just going to highlight the policy so customers can come to this tab to see the policies for customer service for electric, water, and then other policy and procedures. So we'll go ahead and click on the customer service. So we'll go ahead and click on the customer service one. All of them are set up the same and they have a table of contents. So it'll be a quick reference that the customers can view. So say, for example, they want to look up the terms of service, they'll see that's on page eight. They can go over to the side, select page eight and see all that information, what the terms of service are, so they can be familiar with our policies. Now I'm going to go into our customer self-service portal. So if a customer wants to, they can log into their BPU account. And it will give them the option. To view their account transaction history, update their phone number and email, update their mailing address, enroll in paperless billing and then get into energy engaged so they can monitor their usage. So they would click on the link for managed account. And if the customer has set up an account, they'll be able to enter their account number and their password. If they have not done so, then they'll want to go down here to register for online access and then follow the steps to get their account set up. So once they're in their account, the customer is going to be able to see, oh, I'm sorry. And I was going to say this. And I did forget to say it for the website. So our website and the customer self-service page can all be translated into Spanish. So if the customer selects the Spanish option, it'll change everything to Spanish. Those customers can view their information as well. If you click back to English, it'll take it back to English. So here on the account details page, it's going to list what type of service you have. So in this case, this one's residential. It'll have your account number, your current balance, the bill due date, the last payment. And it'll have your phone number that you have listed, your email address, your mailing address, and then the services that you're signed for. So this customer signed for electric, trash, water and storm. So then we'll go ahead and start with the account transaction history. So this is going to hold the billing and payment information for the customer for the last 18 months. So the customer can go on here and hit the link to view the bill. It'll show the payment amount and the date it was made. And then at the bottom, if the customer wanted to, they can export all this information to Excel. Then they'd be able to, you know, if they wanted to keep yearly records of their utility usage. Also, customers sometimes will need their amounts or the payments they made for the year for tax purposes. So that'll be a quick way for them to add that information up and have it available for them. The next one we'll look at is phone number, email and phone number and email update. So if a customer's changed their phone number, this is where they would go to update it. They can put the contact number, they can put a cell phone number, so it can be the same phone number or two different phone numbers. And then they can also update their email address. So once you made the update, you would just hit submit the change and then you'd have a green box up here that says it was successful. If it was an error, then it would show a red box saying there was an error. The customer can also update their mailing address here. So it's going to be similar to the phone number. You'll just enter your information and then update the address and that'll update it. Through the system. So then the next time we mail a bill out, we'll have the correct information on file. If a customer wants to set up paperless billing, they can do it from this site. I'm going to go ahead and do a demonstration doing that. So if a customer wants to set up paperless billing, they select this checkbox. Then they would put in the email address that they want the paperless bill to go to. Then we do make them verify the email address. So though, what'll happen is that email address will get a six-digit verification code. You'll enter in the code and then you'll hit submit changes. Since I didn't enter a code, I am going to get an error that says please verify your email address. So since I have not verified my email address, it's not going to go through. If I had, I'd get the green box saying that it was successful. And then that just helps us verify that it's a valid email address. And then the last item we'll look at on this page is going to be energy engage. So this is something we encourage a lot of customers to use to monitor their usage and just to see how their bill is going to be running. So this is a summary page and it'll give an estimation of what your bill is to date. So and then it tells you when your billing period ends. So this billing period for this customer is going to end on the fifth. Estimates to date is 189 and then estimations projected. So as of the first, it's 137, but based on the usage, it's projected to be at 153 for electric, 58 for water. If you'd like to see a breakdown of that, you would click on my energy. And you can select to see it daily or monthly or for the year. So the viewer in right now is for the month. And you can look at everything by cost at this time. So if I hover over one of the bars. On Friday, January 20th, this person used $3.12 of electricity. If you'd like to see the usage impact, you can click on the usage tab. And for that same day for January 20th, they used 25 kilowatts basically of electricity. So if you knew, you know, say you turned your thermostat up that day or you turned it down and you want to see what the difference was in price or if it made an impact. This will help you review that information. Now you can go into it daily, like say this day, they used a lot of electricity. It was on Sunday. So you can click there and when you click into the daily, it breaks down the electric usage by 15 minute intervals. So you could see they, they had, they were doing something all day long. And then at the bottom, it'll give you the usage again for the day. If you pick one bill, then it'll give you the usage so far for the billing cycle. So so far for this billing cycle, this customer's used 670 kilowatts. You can do the same for water. So it'll show you the water usage for the customer. You can do one day, one bill or a year. Again, this is for one bill. You can hover on this one. Sunday was a busy day, I guess. This person used $1.88 of water. So if you go to usage, that'll show you in CCFs. So they didn't even use half the CCF and then you can click on it. And as you could see, you know, they must have been asleep here. Nothing was going on, no usage. And then at seven o'clock, somebody must have got up. So then there was a little bit of continuous water usage through the day. And when it's, when you look at the water daily, it breaks it down by hour. Do you guys have any questions over that?
So what, what does the call say estimation?
Why does, because, so here it says estimation because we're projecting off what they previously used. So if you continue to use the same amount, then that's what we estimate you at. And then we do say estimation here because it could be different from the time that we get the reads like this could get a read at a certain hour and then we'll actually read the bill maybe earlier to. To bill it.
Could be halfway through a billing cycle too.
Yes.
Looking at it, right?
Yes. Okay, now we'll go to the payment tab on the customer self-service and we'll discuss online payment, setting up automatic bank draft. Equalized payments and then you can also access kiosk payments from here. So here on the payment tab, if you go to payment main, it'll list all the payments I said. So if you select the option to pay online, it'll take you directly to the website. Similar to the one that they do for one line, one time payment. It's going to populate the customer's information. It's going to have the payment methods. If you want to pay with a credit card, debit card or check. You would enter that information here to make your payment. And if they do log into pay like this person did, they'll give them the option to set up automatic payment also with a credit card or check. It'll also reserve their payment information in their wallet. So if you want to save your payment method, that'll be in your wallet. And then it will display your payment history for payments that you've made online only. So if you mail in a check or money order or something like that, it will not display that payment here. Only payments that are made through this website. And then if a customer wants to sign up for automatic bank draft. We do give this disclosure here to continue to pay your bill until you see the message, an important message section stating do not pay per your authorization. And once you set up automatic draft, it could take one to two billing cycles to take effect. So if you don't see that message there, then you are supposed to still pay your bill until that comes up. So if the customer wants to enroll, they go ahead and click to enroll. And it's as simple as selecting if it's a checking or saving and entering the bank name, routing number, account number, and then hitting submit. And they've been set up for automatic draft.
Go back one page, please.
Okay.
So the do not pay for your authorization means that they, they pay their bill regularly or that it's already taken.
That that's going to be taken out. So do not make an additional payment that we'll be, we'll be dropping the payment.
Okay, I just saw where it says it could take two billing cycles and.
So if they sign up like in the middle of a billing cycle or the accounts already billed, then the system's not going to. Take that payment. So they'll still be expected to make that payment manually.
Manually. Okay, thank you.
And then if a customer wants to sign up for equalized payment, they're able to do that online also. It does give the criteria here. You do have to have at least 12 months of billing history at your current location and have a zero balance. And then it explains how the level payment works and how we come up with your amount. So if you decide you'd like to enroll, you can click here on enroll an EPP. And then once you enroll or once before you enroll, it does give you the amount that it'll be set at per month. So in this case, this customer's EPP would be set at 274 a month. If they want to enroll, they click this checkbox here. It pre-populates their information. If they want to add any comments, they can do so and then submit the request and they'll be set up on level payment. Equal payment. And then last, the customers can access the kiosk locations from this site as well. This one has a little bit more information for the customer. It still does have the hours and the phone number, but say the customer doesn't know how to get there. They can click on the link and then it'll give them the direction so they can get to the site to make their payment. And now we're going to talk about the utility services tab here under self-service. So how a customer can connect service, disconnect or transfer service. So if they go to utility services and the customer chooses the option to connect the service. It's going to list out the information that they need to send in as well as the email address they can send it to. And then they'll fill out this information here. So it kind of just gives us. Information on the account as far as who the person is that's signing up. What address are going to be signing up for? If there's any special comments and then they'll just email their documents in. If the customer wants to cancel service, they can do this on this page as well. They select the address they're going to cancel, the date that it needs to be stopped. They'll provide a forwarding address. This information is pre-populated. If there's any comments they want to add, they can and then select to confirm and then select move out and then that order will be processed. And then lastly, if a customer wants to transfer services from one address to another. It'll give them the information on the documents they have to send in. And then in here, they can put the address they're moving to, the date they want to stop service. The address that they're going to move out at and the date that they need to stop that, that we need to stop that service for them. Their mailing address or they can put a new one. This information's pre-populated. They can add any comments, confirm, and then they can place the request to start and stop service.
Gabby, on that one, what, what is the suggested? You know, advanced lead time that we, that we prefer customers to give us.
Just one business day. So at least if the customer can give us one business days notice, yes.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's, that's for finally accounts if they're going to.
But on something like this, if they're wanting to, how much time should we?
We ask at least two, if they allow us two days. So say they send their information today, we just ask them to allow us two days.
Well, I thought it was going to be two weeks.
Oh, no.
I'm used to longer lead times. All right, thank you.
Back up there for one second. We're not encouraging a customer to email their social security number to us, are we?
They can or they can give it to us by phone. So if a customer calls in or if the customer doesn't feel comfortable when they send the information over, they can ask the person that they emailed to please contact them and then we'll contact them to get that information.
Okay.
And sometimes we don't have to. Most of the time, if it's, it's a new customer, then we have to, but we already have customer socials on file. So no.
Okay, thank you.
And it does say the social security is actually requested. It's not a required document.
Can I weigh in? So there's been a request to build some added protection with that. And I know Jerry left the room, Lori and Jeanetta and IT has had some conversations and I know that it's being worked on. Am I correct? Okay.
So the last thing I'm going to go over is the contact us tab. We do want the customers to contact us with any concerns. So they can also contact us directly from here if they don't do it off of the BPU homepage. And this will just be specific to customer service. So if they have a billing inquiry, general information, login issues or meter reading inquiries. They can make the request here and then we would contact the customer back either by phone or email, just depending on what information they put here. And I know the presentation I did today was on the computer, but all this is available to the customers also via their phones or tablets. They have any questions?
Yes, I have one question.
Yes.
Number one, the bills specify the billing date on the bill.
Yes.
And also it's got a due date to bill, right?
Yes.
How many days between the billing day and due day?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five days, okay. How many days between the due date and cutoff date?
Twenty-one.
How many?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. So I'm looking at forty-five days. And then we have another. How many days before you get the real deal that you'll cut you off in the morning?
So then you'll get the new bill. Once your bills due. Like the customer we had in the example today, their bill was due the 30th and their account's going to bill on the fifth. So it was about five to six days.
Okay, so I'm looking at fifty days. You're paying for a bill or something you already used, is that correct?
Yes.
So the public to understand. That they can't buy groceries and all that because they get one bill. But they don't have to pay the BPU bill. They have forty-five days. To pay service that they already used, is that correct?
Yes.
So the public thinks that. We really totally unfair, a lot of circumstance. I don't understand that. When I look up at reality. When you get that bill. It says it was a bill only nineteenth of January. It was my birthday. And then in twenty-five days. If you want to tell me it's due, right?
Yes.
Okay, so my birthday is gone and I got twenty-five days to pay that, right?
Yes.
If I don't pay on that day, then I have a late charge coming, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'll leave this aside. However, I got twenty-one more days. Grace to pay that before they come in turn this week.
Yes.
The people to understand. We have twenty-five days, forty-five days plus five to pay your bill. So keep in mind. How many days to take to pay your bill of service is already used. So therefore the public need to know you have. Free service for thirty days. Forty-five days before you pay with your.
Yes.
I hope that's clear to the public. Those days should be spelled out very clear, maybe in a. Building, so they need to know that. I think we get penalized for things that we give a lot of service to, that we don't get credit for. But we hear all the time, I came by my grocery because my bill was too high. But you had served for forty-five days. So what did you do for forty-five days? You didn't buy no groceries at all. So I don't want to get too technical here, but my point is. You have. Utility assistance program. In those forty-five days. You say I can't pay in those twenty-five days. I can't pay in twenty-one days. So please, utility assistant, get me out. And don't wait till you get that five more days. They're out there trying to turn something off. So we got to communicate with BPU to say I need some help. We've got. Utility assistance programs, ten to fifteen places. You can go and say, I need some money. This month. But don't wait until you use forty-five days to say something. Please don't, folks. Give us a chance to make sure we can help you out. It's your money. We're going to give you to help you pay your bill. That's not our money. That's recycle money. So for we collect, we turn it over to help. The customer and so forth. So keep in mind, BPU ain't all that bad. Thank you very much.
Gabby, I'm sure that this is going to happen, but I, I'd just be interested in.
Gabby, I'm sure that this is going to happen, but I'd just be interested in once we've had a season where we've been able to compile the data, once we've changed the cold weather rule, in just seeing if that has made any kind of difference with shut offs, I'd be interested in that information. And then I would also like to know, do you receive some sort of information from United Way as to what kind of funds are left on a regular basis?
Yes.
So we know that we can tell the customer, there's still money available if you qualify.
We do for hardship, they do advise us that for hardship.
For hardship, okay. Those were my two questions, maybe comments, thank you.
Now hardship program is a different entity than the utility system program.
Yes.
If we understand hardship program, those issues you have beyond cannae bill. For example, you could have a medical situation where a cousin of mine could have an accident, or cause something, unable to go to work. We don't have trouble right now with the bill itself, but if they can't go to work because injured it. So there is a complication, a fire. It's spelled out very clearly, it's a big bill, it's the same line. I need to spell out the topic, so really I'm really trying to say it short. We got the work site, the work pay, all those good things. The newspaper comes out, but probably goes to one person in the household. But how many to read, one person in the house, five people in the house, one person read this, and one way to do it. Folks, please take a break, see that gentleman over there. You make sure, next, is out there with information, to need to answer some of the things you're doing tonight. For example, health support, service assistance program, how you pay the person. All these good things for you here, take time to read this, folks, maybe sometimes this is, you have a BPU, it's already here.
Rob, is, does Haley still have his hand raised? If you can unmute him or ask him to unmute.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Manager, thank you, Bill, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, and I couldn't track everything, I didn't hear the last comment, so it's been covered already. I appreciate just some clarity. I, what a great review of energy engage and water engage. To show on our screens what can be anticipated for consumption of both the and water, and what an anticipated bill could be. Was it mentioned, I know that it came up, how the inquiry could come through the UG on a similar dashboard, for some consistency in what the UG charges might be, that the consumer might access. Before they end up with that bill, that they have twenty-five days, or five more days, or late charges applied to. Is there a similar such dashboard, although it goes beyond the scope of what you know, our stellar staff would, might be able to know, if someone can access to get an idea of what what UG charge might be voiced it, or added to the the consumption bill from energy engage and water engage.
So, this isn't the total, I guess, so it does have this information underneath the graph here on energy engage. And we do have total with other charges, so if you were to subtract that, then you would be able to get the UG charges, so this information below will let you know what's included in the total other charges, and what's included in the electric charges, so that would include the UG charges.
Well, thank you, and I can't see the screen right here, I apologize, but is there a correlation at all, or anywhere for consumption or energy and or water usage? The volume of which correlates to the responding UG charges that would be shown on the screen, on the screen?
So that information's given on the bill, the sewer charges are impacted by the water usage for four months out of the year, for December, January, February, and March. And then the pilot charges are determined by your usage monthly, and that's also on the bill.
So the answer then is, there's no way for a consumer to know approximately ahead of time what that is? What those individual charges, again, the UG charges will, as you provided the energy engage and water engage, there's no way to know until the bill arrives, how much those charges are from the UG.
Correct, to get the breakdown, yes.
Okay, so we, okay, thank you, thank you.
We do have, we do have a project later this year where we're going to be updating energy engage. So the look and feel will be different, will be different. I don't mind going to the UG to say, here's what we're doing, here's other things we can add from the unified government. My hope is unified government will then pay for those enhancements. There's everything that we're doing here, I mean, we're doing it with BPU dollars, customer dollars. And there's no cost, there hasn't been any cost sharing today, so I can extend that offer to the UG to see if they are interested in in participating and and building graphics and things like that on their portions of the services that we bill for.
Well, and thank you, thank you, Mr. In the, for equity and transparency, at least to our consumers, our ratepayers, our taxpayers, why would they not? Well, I mean, they, they put the line item there, but we don't have an idea what's coming until the bill is unlocked, and we see those charges. So I would hope, and certainly, when you approach them, they just want to be transparent, just want to give a heads up for what the taxpayer, the ratepayer, the consumer, whatever you want to call each of our consumers, our customers can look forward to, or can anticipate to prepare for this, before they reach their limit, as was said. You know, before the month, of reaching the limit of a month.
Mr. Haley, this is Jeff, so I remember when, when this was still in the behind the scenes stage, the energy engage, and there was a lot of discussion about, you know, the UG charges having to be an estimate because there is, I mean, most of what they put in there is a a lot of studying, and it's fairly close, but we can't guarantee with pinpoint accuracy that, that the 11959 is going to be exactly what it's going to be on the twenty-fourth day of a billing cycle, because there's, you know, it all comes down to the whole, the water use, I mean, there's still variables out there, so the formulas are built with the best guess in there, but the final bill is the final bill, it should, you know, you should always overestimate a little bit when you look at it, so that you know if if you're at 11959 here, I would assume that it's 120, that way, if I'm on a budget, I'm trying to keep within it.
Well, good to have a head, and I appreciate that, thank you, but as much as possible, if we're able to do water engage and electric in the future, we ought to at least be able to estimate a bit, so people have an idea how they can plan, and to reach that, because the sticker shock, as we all know, is increasingly alarming for our consumers, and whatever we can do to allow everyone to prepare. You know, to make this note, to have an idea of what they're going to be billed, I think would be advantageous for us all.
We'll extend the offer to the unified government, you know, just like with our current bill that gets mailed out, or the E-bill. The UG did participate in the design process of how they wanted their page laid out, what some of the language, verbiage was that went on the bill, on the unified government page, so they did participate there, fortunately for us, moving to that new bill was no cost to the utility, so there was no cost to talk to unified government about sharing it, in this case, there will be a cost. So I will have to, again, approach them to see if they're willing to participate in, and share in that, in the cost to deploy this new operating.
Well, okay, and thank you for taking this time, again, I would renew also inside of that, a desire to see our bill bifurcated, that there would be maybe two bills, and as has been suggested. One being the UG taxes or charges, whatever you want to call them, and of course, the assumption charges for our electric and or water use. And that those two bills would be independent of one another, and that the first would not be, that would be the taxes, that would not be related to what a conscientious ratepayer is trying to do to conserve energy and water, would not hold, or would hold them a certain level, hold them harmless from any penalty such as disconnection, at least for longer than one month. So anyway, I just want to renew that, that will be a constant theme, frankly, that I would hope to to maintain in our discussions going forward.
Hey, David, this is Rose. So on the separate bills, I want to be clear in what you're advocating for. Are you advocating for separate bills that BPU still administers? Or BPU would administer the bill for electric and water usage? And then the unified government administers the bill for the unified government-related charges?
If this world, those were mine, or ours, and if we were to be viewed in I think the fairest light, we, the Board of Public Utility, it would be the latter, that they would have to, but the UG is never going to free us up. I imagine that the UG commissioners and the administrations, part of our charter are weaned so strongly on the abuse of taxation of our consumer ratepayers to tax through the use of electricity and water, that supplemental income is such that they're not going to free us up from that directly. But the best we could, I think, hope for is to have the two separate bills, and so the taxpayer, consumer, ratepayer has the two bills and says, well, this month, I paid the BPU what I used for electricity and water. But I see my tax bill to the UG, the various line items, pilots, sewer, trash, et cetera. Whatever that cumulative rate is, I didn't pay my tax bill yet, but I get three months before the collection agency, also known as the BPU, can interrupt my service. Where they can interrupt my service after however many days Mr. Mylan just outlined, for not you know, for mere water and energy consumption after thirty whatever days. But the taxes would give a longer period of time, the UG taxes, or period of time on that second bill before we, the collection agency, also known as your Board of Public Utilities, would intervene and maybe take the penalty of disconnection.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification, thank you.
Thank you.
I think the, the best that staff can do in this area is just to come back to the board by seeing what the cost and what the entire new process would look like if we were to separate, and then then it becomes a conversation between BPU and the unified government, if we go down that path, so.
Understood, and I know, excuse me, Bob, I know that we, I think we only had one quarterly meeting with the UG in 2022. Maybe we'll have two in 2023, I don't know.
I'm trying to get four.
I, I hear you, but yeah, no, it's understood, and obviously, it would be, it would be good to know what the cost would be to bifurcate the bill, thank you.
Well, that's, that's a Band-Aid approach, that's very good, it started some years ago, let me break down something, what we need here. In 2009, we had a joint meeting with the Board of Public Utilities, right behind me. None of you folks is here at all. With that meeting, we had a memo of the commissioner, BPU commissioner, BPU, side by side. We discussed these issues we have between the Board of Public Utilities and the UG. All these issues about having two separate bills, and this has been done, Mr. Haley, many years ago. So this discussion, just on a quality basis, between the President of our board and the Vice President and a couple of members from the UG, that's, that's good, keep that going. But in order to get down to what a rubber meets the road, until we have a consolidated meeting, I don't care how long it takes, with all the commissioners, all ten and all six, sit down and discuss all these issues, and then engage the person in the various departments to bring forth the reason for the problem we have. We have that going, and we had a MOU, a memo of understanding, that we would transfer the payment little taxes from thirteen point five down to eleven point nine. In two years, we go down to seven point nine, nine point seven, in two years. That memo was agreed to by both bodies, 2009. They got to into the trash can, that's been done before. We need to go back and find out that memo, the agreement was made, that we would reduce the payment little taxes from thirteen nine, which we did, to eleven nine, which we ordered a date. And in two years, in 2011, it said it went down to nine point seven. That never happened, but that was the agreement, folks, don't know that, it's in the minutes, in the broadcast, so I know what I'm talking about. So I'm advocating, we need to think about having that meeting, this president, a joint meeting, that we can sit down and elbow to elbow, and elbow to elbow, make sure we have an understanding of what we're trying to do, because right now, it's going all kinds of ways. You got a new administration at the UG, we're here pretty solid, so we need to have that type of conversation going. For the public to be assured that we're working together, because we disintegrate, disengage right now, to say the least. That can be corrected through communication properly, thank you.
Thank you, Bob, I appreciate that, and I can assure you that Bill and I will, will work together to try to get a meeting of the full elected bodies between the two organizations this year.
All right, any other questions for Gabby, for Gabby before she leaves? Thank you, Gabby, thank you, Janetta. Next on the agenda, last, Jeremy Ash, can you come up to the podium? Provide an update on what you've been doing for the last few weeks and few months. I know this is kind of a start of a continuing discussion, I do want to bring the board up to speed on some of the things you've been working on.
Thank you, Bill, board, Madam President.
Excuse me, Jeremy, I, you do not have any problem with your voice this evening, I understand, is that right?
I do not.
There was a game last night as well, I didn't know, I know that wasn't your national championship, but.
It was not.
Okay.
I would remind the President that K, Kansas State is still unbeaten at home, KU has one loss at home.
Two hundred and four to ninety-five, thank you.
He was expecting that.
I, I didn't have much time to prepare, I was, I was a little busy today, so. But as Bill mentioned, I did take on a little bit different role last summer, and excited to have that role, it's a great opportunity for Excited to have that role. It's a great opportunity for not only me, but I think for the organization. We've done a lot of things in the first six or seven months here to bring some departments together and work on some things. Together and and try to build off off of some consistencies and build in some more efficiencies for the operations groups. The the operations groups make up the largest part by headcount and budget of what what we do here, so it is important. And I'm gonna tell you a little bit tonight about what we've been doing since July, so. Next slide, please, Rob. So I'll go through a little bit about the team that reports to me the size of their departments. Some of the things we've been doing to date, I'll probably go a little light on a couple of the areas and a little more in depth on a couple of the others. Because I understand we'll probably be my team and I providing some kind of regular update to the board going forward this year in twenty twenty three, so. We'll talk about some of the team objectives this year and then some of my personal objectives that I hope to. Work on this year, not only as part of just myself, but as my, as it relates to the team as well, so. Next slide, please, Rob. This is the team. You all know them. Jaren Perty, Steve Green, Glenn Brendel, and Darren McNew. Again, the four operational groups, the largest by headcount. You've all heard from all of them before. I'm sure they're very happy that I put their picture up on the screen tonight. So you guys can thank me later for that. Next slide, please, Rob. So Electric Supply, twenty fourteen members out there, some of the things we've done to date is. Establish the normal weekly meeting, Jaren and his leadership team, we get together. Sometimes it's fifteen minutes every Monday, sometimes it's two hours, depending on what we want to talk about. Efforts that they might have ongoing that I can help them with information that I just want to know. In my, in my, all of my days, electric operations, we worked closely with electric supply, so. A lot of that information, a lot of that organization was familiar to me. The people are over there and what they do, they do have some things going on this year that are going to be new. Terrance team has undertaken a lot of of I T work, really implementing the new E M S system and and everything that they work on. They they kind of have, they have their own I T team over there. It's it's pretty unique and a lot of smart people over there doing a lot of good work. Some of the, some of the other ideas or or some of the come out of our meeting, we we started trying to catalog a little bit differently. Some of the information that they collect from how the system operates, how the plant operates. What affects those different operations disruptions, how we can, how we can. Sort of bring all that information together, put it in one repository. And we, you know, share information from supply to the plant, help them understand, maybe. See something from a different point of view to drive Glenn's maintenance activities or making sure that. You know, we're committing the units efficiently, getting the most out of the units, what makes sense in the market. So I think that's been good. There's, there's a good, good group out there and they are constantly looking at the most efficient and the most. Cost effective way for us to run our business to how we interact with the people that manage our fuel. Talk a little bit about that. Working with Maurice's group, Lori's group, Glenn's group and Jaren's group. One of the the things that we've tasked with this year is to come up with a better fuel procurement strategy, so. You know, down at the power plant, there was, we've had a lot of turnover and there was a different. Management group in place. They had one way of how they were procuring things and operating their business. We've been able to dive in a little bit with Glenn, Jaren, Andrew Ferris, Maurice. We think there's a better way we can do that. We think we can, we think we can shore up some agreements with. People that manage fuel procurement, or we could possibly manage them ourselves and gain some efficiencies there. Maybe buy on more of a future type of arrangement than buy on the spot when we need it and and it's as high as it can be when we need it. Because we only need it when everybody else needs it, so that's that's one effort that. The team collectively is working on, and again, it's, it's, it's help, help from Glenn, it's help from Jaren's group, it's help from Andrew Ferris and and Lori's group. So we're hoping that 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 creates some value, like a good bit of value for us. You know, use information, use trends, leverage all of that to. To get the fuel on a better program, really. We're even trying to find a way to, can we find somebody to even help merge in how we do that? Is there somebody that also can manage the part that we use for our fleet? Because we buy fuel for the plant, usually comes from the same place we buy fleet fuel, so. Can we find some synergies and putting all those things together and and helping ourselves out? So it's one of the things we're doing. Another thing that, you know, Jaren and his group. They tend to have some turnover over there in some roles and it's really not due to anything they're doing. It's it's just market driven. The market for what his security folks do is, it's really hot, so. Jaren was able to, you work with Dennis's team, come up with an idea to bring in a sort of a lower level person to. That that we can groom all the way in up and through that and hopefully have them stay here. B P U has really good luck. With retaining folks that we train. I mean, I talked about it before in Lyman's apprenticeship, it's the same way, so we're hoping, hoping to build on something from that program as well. Next slide, please, Rob. Electric production this year, their approved head counts ninety seven people. As you know, we've experienced two leadership retirements at the end of the year. Dong Wad and Tom Nguyen, director of, if you didn't know Tom, he was the director of engineering at the plant, so. We kind of scratched our head, thought about some strategy there, worked with Bill and and Dennis's team. Ultimately settled on the strategy that we we want. And in fact, this morning, we finalized our strategy with Dennis's team. Ashley Culp's on board and we are going to be engaging a search firm to help us find those two replacements, their their key roles. It's it's Glenn's role that he vacated as as a director and it's the director of engineering, so. Unfortunately, you know, there's, there's a top tier need and and we're going to have to look outside of B P U maybe to find it, so. That's what we're going to do and kudos to to Glenn and and Dennis's team because. Sometimes that's not an easy decision to look, look at, you know, your team and what's going on and, you know, put together a strategy that. May or may not include your team. That's tough and and they did it the right way, so. Of course, all that, you know, we sat with Bill and talked about what we wanted and and how best Glenn could could. You know, support the plant activity and and get the teams in place and Bill bought into that plan too, and so that's, that's where we're moving. We're also working to try to. Work with I B W down there and we're trying to sort of reshape and refocus some of the. Bargaining unit positions to get some more flexibility out of the people we have so that we're not so siloed and. People can do only this thing and they have to wait till this person comes and turns this knob till they can push their button kind of thing. You know, Alan, Alan Dixon at I B W, he's been receptive to that, so he, you know, we've got a couple little. One off road blocks in front of us, but Glenn and the team are still working on it, Dennis's team. Had some of those discussions today. And we'll keep, we'll keep moving on that, but. A big, a big thing we need to do at the plant and this also. Involves working with Lori's group, we we, it's it's sort of kind of like the the fuel purchases, but we have another, we have another. Set of agreements down there, a number of other agreements that we feel like are probably a little bit out of date. And Glenn and his team, we we've engaged Becky Aldinger from Lori's team. We've had some preliminary talks, what we're going to do leading up to our spring outage in April. After that, Becky's on board with trying to dig a little bit into those agreements and see how we can create some better efficiencies that. The the biggest thing a lot of our agreements do, I think, at this point is they tie our hands a little bit when we're in an outage of who we can allocate to what work. Once we discover it, right? So, you know, the plant, the plants are there, they take it offline, they they know what their normal maintenance is. But sometimes when you dig into something, you find something that you didn't expect, right? And so right now, some of our agreements don't allow us to just dispatch resources right then. We have to go back through a purchasing process. That just simply because of the way the agreement is today is a little bit cumbersome. So Lori's team, Becky, they they recognize a lot of that and we've got some people in place now. We're willing to to dive in and see if we can create some efficiencies there, so. And then the bottom there, we talked about the fuel management strategy a little bit. I guess I got ahead of myself talking about Jaren's group, but. It's, you know, the plant is this community's largest asset, it's B P U's. Largest driver of finance a lot of time, and so. You know, there's real good reason for us to do the work we're doing down there and trying to find these efficiencies. And number one, keep the plant dispatched at its its highest capacity when it's needed. And do that safely for everybody down there, so that's, that's what's driving that.
Jeremy, so on the the fuel management, you were talking about the the processes that are in place right now being cumbersome. But I think a lot of those are probably put in place because to to prevent any. Potential look of, you know, not being above board on everything, so. I'm glad to hear that you're working with Lori's team to to make sure the auditability of it is still there and everything, but. But yeah, if we can increase efficiencies to prohibit and shorten lead times, so.
One of the other drivers is really, you know, Glenn says it better than anybody, but. There's ways to automate all these agreements and take these. Clerical responsibilities away from people that need to focus on other issues and problems with the plant. And once we have those in place, we'll really see that it's those processes that are cumbersome now for Glenn and his folks. And Lori and Becky and their folks, we'll we'll see that gain an efficiency. It'd be one thing that hits their desk and it's gone right away. It doesn't sit there and wait for other manual processes and means of communication, so. Next slide, please, Rob. If you don't know, I'm sure you do, that is Neiman Power Plant. It's a, it's a pretty neat place. If you haven't been down there, we can get you down there. Excellent, Rob. And there's the solar farm that sits down at Neiman. I know that's always on everybody's mind, but that there's our, a shot of our solar resource down there. Go ahead, Rob. Water Ops. Everybody knows Steve, that's Steve's, Steve's department, Steve's, really Steve's passion, if you. If you ever question that, just ask him a couple of questions about it and he'll, you'll know right away that he that he cares pretty deeply about that place, so. Water Ops and Electric Ops are the two largest mobile ops groups. You know, the plant is large, but it's static. These groups are out in the city amongst the the customer base, amongst all the other obstacles there in in the community, so. One of the things that Steve and I started seven, eight, nine years ago, probably. We started communicating with each other on simple things, you know, hey, it's raining today, what time are you going to send your guys out, this, that, the other? So we, you know, we always had this kind of finger pointing, well, they do this and we do that, and so. One of the goals that Steve and I had for a while was trying to establish some consistencies. We did that to some extent. Obviously, we're both in a little bit different position now where we can have a greater effect on a lot of those things and and we've continued that today to today, so. We started the last summer doing some. Monthly leadership meetings, that's really no other way to say it, so what we do is is Steve and his leadership group. And Darren and his leadership group, we get together once a month, hour and a half. We rotate facilities that we do it at so that we're being, so that everybody sees what we're doing. We're trying to come together, we're trying to work together, we're sharing information, we're building consistencies and and. You know, we couldn't just do that here, we couldn't just do it at Monty, we have to to get around and let everybody see that we're doing that. A lot of great things have come from that, guys have, I mean, literally, you know, supervisors that have worked here. Seven, eight years didn't have each other's phone number, have, now they have their phone, or I mean, simple things, they can pick the phone up and call, what are you doing in this situation? It just helps everybody get more comfortable with each other and lean on each other and and we tackle some easy stuff and we tackle some hard stuff, so. That that's a good initiative, we're gonna, we're gonna keep doing that. One of the things that Steve, one of the challenges that they have in their water engineering group and Steve's actually. Working on some succession planning there, five of their seven. Engineers are retirement eligible, so. Steve has has worked to move some. Vacancies around, we're going to go get a junior engineer or two and we're going to start developing them so that when those retirements eventually happen. We won't be left with a hole. We'll have some people that are already in there, albeit they're not going to be as experienced. They're going to be familiar with the organization, they're going to be familiar with the work roles, who to go for to for help, those kinds of things. To that end. We just finished up some meetings last week, we're updating a lot of our. The G I S roles here and going to go try to get some different talent and Steve and the civil engineering team. Darren and part of the electric engineering team will work together to finalize those job descriptions. And and again, it's just another level of consistency, if we can go get. The people with the same skills and the same talents, we're better off than having a bunch of just individual niche people, so. You know, one of the things, I guess, that we've also worked with Dennis's group and. February fifteenth, I believe, is the date. Darren is going to have two of the electrical engineers go, one from, one from T and D Engineering and one from substation engineering. And they are going to go with Chris Stewart and Philip Brown from Water Engineering and we're going to go up, participate in the K State Job Fair. We've worked with Dennis's team, got the guys all registered up, we've got some information. That we can share and we're going to go up there and hopefully we can find some junior people to bring in and start developing. If nothing else, maybe we can find an intern or two that we might want to try to follow back up with in another year, so. We're excited about that, Dennis, you know, like I said, Dennis's team helped us get get going on that. And we're going to look to expand that to a couple other more schools, we're going to try to hit K U. We're going to try to hit Missouri S and T, which was Missouri Rala. And we're just going to try to keep, keep building, building on that, so. Those are, those are all good things and it and again, you know, we're doing it together, so. Next slide, please, Rob. That's just the shot of Steve's group working on a transmission main they had some problems with. In the fall, so got all that work done, believe they did all of it with their in-house resources. Darren's Darren's team had to send down a few things, we got a, we've got some distribution. Electric lines that run through there, so they had to partner up with them on that, but nice project, did it all in house. So kind of the same, you know, two bullet points there, we're doing a lot of information sharing, learning together. It's, it's, we, you know, we can all learn from each other and that's what we're trying to do. One of the other things that Bill and I'll be working on here this quarter is trying to, you know, get the job description up. Updated out there and and possibly get that rule posted here in this first quarter. You know, get the job description up, updated out there and and possibly get that role posted here in this first quarter. One of the things that. We're trying to keep in mindful of out there is we still have some more turnover on the horizon out there too, and so we're going to make sure we do the right thing to to fill those gaps when 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 those things happen. One of the things that I. You know, we started working on before COVID. Electric Ops was working with Kansas City, Kansas Community College, and we were trying to help them. Wrote some letters of support, secure some funding for some technical training and possibly to start a line school. COVID interrupted that for us. Got re-energized here sometime last spring, summer. Darren and his team have taken it a little further, they've helped KCKCC with their electronics program. We have a number of uses at BPU for electronics technicians and electricians. Very happy to report that we now have one of our substation engineers who is teaching in the program at the college. So we're hoping that that yields some. You know, some candidates in our pipeline for us to. It it can only benefit us to have a good relationship there and be. Finding people from our community, supporting them and educating themselves here with our resources and then coming to work. At our utility in our community, so. That's pretty neat, he's a bright young man, some point this year, try to get him down here and maybe have him update you on his. Efforts of of what he's doing there. Next slide, please, Rob. That's just a shot of some line crew, which by the way. I want to steal David's thunder, but he had a lot of nice new pictures taken, so I stole some from him for. So what are we going to do as the executive team this year? We're going to continue to enhance those consistencies, I mean, that's that only helps all of us. You know, we've, again, we've got more turnover on the horizon, so the more we can get familiar with each other and what we do. The better off we're going to be if we do have a hole for a while, we can pick up the ball, keep going until we get permanent backfill. And and some of that is going to be in key leadership positions, so. Another thing we're looking to do. You know, we. It's important for us to get our leadership teams some exposure to different activities. To different parts of the company. And we're trying to do that. You know, one of the things we were able to do when we started the group meetings is. All of the supervisors from water, the the electric side gave them a presentation about the electric system. What's in the ground, what they're working on, how it could affect them, who to call when they're unsure. We we tweaked that a little bit and then the electric guys went down and they gave that presentation to all of the water operations group. So not just the supervisors, but the whole group. And then we replicated that process with the water, we had the water supervisors give the presentation to the electric supervisors. Then they came out and gave it to the entire electric group. Again, just exposing more of us to each other, what we do, how we do it. Hoping that it'll pay a dividend, I think it will. We talk a lot about setting goals, both personal and professional. And we talk a lot about. Getting people. In some professional development activities, we've, we've done a lot with KMU, we're doing some teaching down there, we're taking some. Leadership training down there, and I think that's important because. We want to empower those folks to do their work, we want to enhance. Their skills and capabilities, we want to expose them. To more so that they can better themselves, better this company, and and we just want to lead, that's all we want to do, so. Hopefully, that's what the operations groups are are going to demonstrate, I'm, I'm sure they will. So a little bit about what me personally, you know, when we talk about goal setting and leadership and all that, I'm not immune to that, I expect myself. To do it as well, so. You know, you can, you can see what's up there, we're going to continue to enhance. The leadership meetings, we're going to start bringing in other folks, we had Dennis's team come in a few months ago. And talk to us about how we could navigate the recruiting system ourself, take some of that burden off of them, but also. Condense our timeframe of what it takes us to get a candidate, screen them, schedule them, get them in here and cut that time down in which we're turning people over. That that was pretty beneficial, it was starting to happen. Right as as Steve's team had some vacancies that they were trying to work through, so it was really good timing. You know, one of the things that I probably missed on last year is I didn't. In the first six months, establish some sort of regular meeting. Away from BPU with just myself and the executive directors, that's one of my goals for this year. You know, get us away from here, get us, get, you know, in a relaxed environment once a month, whatever it is, if it's breakfast or lunch or something and. Have some discussions with nobody around but us, I think that's important for a continuity of the team and what we're trying to do, so. That's some, one of the things they're going to see from me, to get on their calendar, to do that. And, you know, just some of the, some of the other things I'm going to try to dive into myself a little bit more of Buggin Lori and her group. There's a lot of opportunity there. One of the things I've never done really in my career and and Steve, Steve does a great job inviting me to some of the water. Conventions and networking opportunities, so I definitely got some room there for me to grow and be looking to do. Some of that this year and, you know. Customer service, I think that's a goal of mine is to make sure that the operational teams are not only providing good customer service. But they're sharing good information with the customer service group. I think we should, we can do a better job of letting customer service know. Where we're going to be in the community, when we're going to have a disruption of service of some kind. Or if we have some unexpected event, making sure we're, when we get a minute and it's safe to do so, to let her and her folks know. That this is what we have disrupting the system, and this is when we anticipate to have it resolved. We don't do a real good job of that today. So we're going to get better at that and we're going to get better at our customer service in the field, we've talked with some folks maybe about. Leaving some survey information, you know, how did we do, how how do you feel the condition of your property when we got here, how do you feel when we left? You know, th- those kinds of things that we can use to maybe. Help some of the pain points when we're out on somebody's property working, so. That's a little bit about. What we've been doing and what we're going to keep doing, so. With that, I would, I would answer any questions you might have or or any criticisms you might have. Outside of the KU stuff.
Jeremy, thank you for the update, appreciate it.
Oh, I forgot to mention, so. One more minute, I know Dennis wants to get out of here. Steve has presented to you all about the lead and copper stuff that we have to do this year. His team finished their audit. I think they finished it really right on time. The the amazing thing about it is they have some secondary work to do from that. But I think they were able to evaluate some fifty some thousand. Services. All of it done in-house with their own resources, we didn't farm out any of the work. And they're on, if not ahead of schedule, what we have to do, so his team deserves some. Some credit for that, if you see him or you see those folks, they've they've done a fantastic job with that.
Jeremy, I'd just like to make a comment, thank you for your your presentation and. It just seems to me that communication and information sharing is key and where you plan to go and where you plan to lead and I. I appreciate that because I think those are two very important qualities.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy. Good job. All right, moving on to miscellaneous comments. We're still working through the process on the county administrator search. So I think probably the only thing I'll mention tonight is. Next week on the seventh, there will be a public meeting greet for three candidates. That. Has gotten. Through the process so far and. That's going to be, unless, I know there was some conversation about maybe doing something outside of City Hall, but from everything that I know is. Is that the date and time haven't changed, it's six thirty next Tuesday on the seventh. At City Hall, so six thirty, I think it's about an hour and a half, Wendy, I'm kind of looking at you for. Think it's about an hour and a half meeting, so that day, there's a series of things that's going to happen before before he gets to the public meeting greet. But as that plays out. And if we can maintain the schedule for the day, you know. They will be introduced in a public at six thirty.
Yeah, I think that is a time change, isn't it, Wendy? I saw originally seven o'clock, but I can confirm that, I have an email from the, if you get the E news. Newsletter that the UG sends out every Thursday. All the information is in that, so I'll make sure I forward that to you tomorrow, Bill, just to confirm. And there's also a link in there where you could submit questions ahead of time if you want to.
And you have to sign up if you're attending, is that correct?
I'll have to look on that too, I think they want to make sure they have enough room.
Okay.
Candidates for UG.
Okay. And then the other, only other thing that I wanted to report tonight, and I will. I'll come back next week. With the more information, but. At the end of this month, some of you guys may know, some of you may not know, but Jenny's going to be retiring. At the end of this month, sorry, put in her notice, she's been kind of. Let me know for some time and and she at first had thought about the beginning of the year and then she kind of pushed it out. I think past her anniversary and her birthday, anniversary, right? Right, and so, so anyway. We're going to plan something, you know, it won't be anything too too big, but we'll plan something, have something here at the offices for. If you guys. If you guys want to stop by, we'll certainly extend the invitation to the board. But I'll, I'll, I'll do more conversations about Jenny's career next board meeting and, you know, we'll have Jenny come up to the podium. Like others and let her express some of her thoughts as well, so. All I have for tonight, unless there's any questions for me. All right, back to you, Madam President.
Thank you, Bill. We'll go to board comments, Mary, you're up.
Okay, I just wanted to tell the board that I've started to study the issue of. Community engagement, which I said I'd do in the last work session and. I would like to sort of discuss with the whole board what I've gleaned so far and. If we could do that in work session, if you could put that on the agenda, I would appreciate that. I'm still working very hard at getting a copy of all of those grants that are supposed to be available. For this and was also told that there's. A lot of grants that can help with community involvement as well, so. Hope to have copies of those to bring to the work session next time and. Talk about where we are and how we can move forward with community engagement. That's it.
Thank you, Mary. Mr. Groneman. Comments this evening?
Yes, 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 can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'd just like to thank the staff for the great presentations that they gave this evening. Customer service, that was very informative to go through the, all the different. Pages on our website, I learned a lot and I'm sure that the public that was attending or watching would too. And Jeremy, I, that was a great presentation. The information, it it sounds like you're doing exactly what we had hoped for when we approved the position. Of COO. The leadership teams, the communication, it's all, it's all positive and I want to thank you for jumping in. And and getting, getting that going and doing, doing such a, such a good job, as it appears. Just a brief update on me, I went to the surgeon yesterday. And everything is looking good, I'll be discharged from in-home therapy. On Friday and start outpatient therapy on. Tuesday and it's basically, you know, I should be up and and out and about and ready for the next meeting. So hopefully I'll see you in two weeks. That's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. David, do you have any comments this evening?
Well, thank you, Madam President and and members and. Certainly, Tom, glad to hear you're on the mend, sorry that we didn't see you this time and I'm away, I'm, as we speak at the Kansas Municipal Utilities. Meeting here in Topeka. Which is why I'm not there and I'm meeting, I'm talking to other municipal utilities. Stakeholders, board members and those that too are interested in delivering service. Energy and water, in some cases from across the state of Kansas here in Topeka. I appreciate thanking, you know, both the update on customer service from the staff. As well as Jeremy Ash's update as well, thank you, I've been taking copious notes here at the hotel where this meeting is being held. I I hope that we can bear in mind some of the points that were made, especially in customer service. I look forward to joining you and at the at the next meeting and always want to urge. Every member to be in touch of the public as they have been. With issues as we try to get through some of these, some of these particular times. That's all I have on on this end and and thank you again and everyone stay safe out there, oh, and I look forward to hearing from Jenny. Next time too, and I'm going to filter, she won't be filtered on what she has to say, right, right, Bill? She can, she can be outspoken on whatever it is as she, as she leaves us after all these many years of service.
Thanks, David, Bob, you have comments?
Well, thank you, I'd like to comment the customer service. Staff again for excellent job and also Dave, thank you for all the hard work. Make sure the website had everything they talked about, so I'll comment to both of y'all, we're working together, make sure to publish updated. Best we can, so we're going to try to improve more communication the best we can, so the public can be aware. How we do business, so thank you very much for your participation tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. My comments this evening. I'll start off with, as I understand it, there is going to be an an ordinance. I guess amendment, charter ordinance amendment. Tomorrow evening that's being presented at the full commission meeting. Regarding segregating the pilot between residential customers and all other class of customers. I had a chance to see that ordinance yesterday, I presume that it's included in the agenda on the UG as well. I, I don't really know more than that, other than it seemed like that. Came out of order with the work that we were doing with the task force, but. So so that's what I know, I. That's what I know at this point, I I assume that it has been vetted legally. To determine that we can actually segregate that. So hopefully, my friend Wendy here can can confirm that. Go ahead.
Yes.
Awesome. So so more to come on that. But I wanted to make sure that that, and I I will be at tomorrow night's meeting as well. Second thing, Mary, to your point on community engagement, I appreciate you meeting with some folks in the community. You know, sort of regarding some of the information that they have sent to the entire board and. The general manager over the last couple of weeks and. I'm obviously very in favor of and and hopefully we will put a work session. Beginning at five o'clock for next meeting in two weeks. To talk about some of these issues, I mean, to me, I think what it comes down to is is we have to potentially look at. Our policies in terms of. How how do our policies adapt to the most vulnerable customer base that we have? And that can be. I think. I I think it can be grouped into separate categories and I don't think the categories are very difficult to to see. But those are some of the things I I think that we should be looking at as a board. In addition to next steps on how we actually potentially establish. A community working group with representatives of the community in working toward, you know, some of these, some of these objectives. So that's the second. So that's the second. Third, Gabby, thank you very much for your presentation. I know you're up there for a really, really long time. Um, as someone who uses the website every single month to pay my bill, you in, actually educated me about a bunch of stuff on the website tonight that I sometimes do not have an opportunity to use or look at. So thank you for walking us through that. Jeremy, um, I, I am sorry for your loss last night, but I did really appreciate your presentation tonight. And I will echo Tom's comments on that. And, and Mary's comments on that, sort of the, um, just, just the interconnectivity of the departments at BPU is, is really critical to its continued success and really, really great to see, um, some of that stuff in action. So thank you very much for that. And, uh, we will get to you next time, Jenny. Uh, I did not know you were retiring. So that's, comes a little bit of a shock, I guess, um, to me. But that's all I have, uh, for this evening. Uh, Mr. Bryant?
I just want to thank everybody for the presentation. Gabby, it's always good to see you. And thank staff and not just the people in this room, but, but all the crews out there. I, I go to work, uh, I leave the house about five thirty in the morning. And there's been a couple of days as you walk out there and it's, it's pretty brisk. And I, it makes me think about the, the crews that are out there when they get calls and they're out there working in that, uh, day in and day out. And I only have to be in it for a five-minute drive. So thank you all and please pass that along to all the crews that they're truly appreciated.
Thank you. Uh, I believe I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
This is Jeff. Move to adjourn.
It's been moved in second. Roll call, please.
Sorry, roll call. Gonzalez?
Yes, I.
Groneman?
I.
Haley?
I.
Mylan? Mulvaney Henry?
I.
Bryant?
I.
That motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.